Can you guys hear me?
Hello.
I guess it really doesn't even need us. We just don't we don't view anybody. Right, that's all the only thing we're missing.
Why don't we?
I'll send you down.
Yeah. I said the major structure of our.
Sure, no beach roads by the airport.
Or tanker and so.
Do you want to share your screen or anything? Okay.
Go. I see.
One nation under God in its soul with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for zoning ordinance solar farms. Second.
You do second.
And because we're. Sorry, because Mallory is online, we'll have to do our our votes by roll call. So Mallory in favor?
Yes, sorry for the inconvenience.
John?
Yes. I'm yes.
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 By in favor are will open our public hearing. On the solar farm. So Mr. Vice Chair submitted to you is revision eight. Which was the latest one I had with the changes that were done by both by real counsel. And that's a proposed document. I guess we'll open up to a public comment. We'll start with the people on Zoom. Unless Tim, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Mr. Vice Chair. Anybody on Zoom would like to bring anything up? Have any comments? Okay, anybody here in the room?
I guess the only one just. Yeah, 34 Liberty Street. I'm also part of the Conservation Commission. I have a couple of questions, comments about the ordinance. I think the first one was. I took a look through the main Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry. They have a technical guidance. For solar farm installations. And the thing that jumped out to me was this ordinance doesn't reference invasive species management. But they have several. guidances as far as how to manage invasive species. So just to give a little bit of. To step back a little bit, when you do these sort of clearings on forested areas, it invites a lot of. Or it is an opportunity for invasive species to come in, whether it's through. Bird droppings or trucks, construction trucks coming in. From who knows where and what happens is we disrupt the soil. And we clear area for these invasions to come in. What happens? What will happen is it could take over. I mean, I've seen it in my backyard and. Several places around town. I mean, you see it along the streets. Where, you know, certain. Whether it's vines or other types of invasions will come in and basically take over the ecosystem and before it's. You know. It. After a while, it becomes too far gone and it's too much to manage. So. I would suggest looking into the technical guidance and. Potentially, when they do a site walk or any potential. Solar farms inventory, what's already there. And then potentially. Monitor it going forward to make sure that it doesn't introduce any more invasive species. How does the ordinance impact the existing solar farm? On Junction Road?
Doesn't.
It doesn't at all. So that's just. Office off sailing and.
Yeah, anything that was in process didn't touch. Anything that's gone through the planning board, it didn't touch.
Okay. The only other comment I'll have is about it was interesting. Where they said that the fence had to be six inches high to allow for passing of certain. Animals. I don't know where they came up with the six inches, but I was wondering. Like, is that set in stone? What if there's something that happens 10 years down the line where, say, Fox, we find out that Fox are. Endangered or become endangered and that this solar farm is blocking box might read through our town. Or one of their wildlife passages are. Is that set in stone that that's six inches for the next 25 or however long the solar farm? Is set up? Is that set in stone or can it be modified depending on? How things change over time in terms of. What we find out like with wildlife corridors?
Yeah.
But ordinance now would be remodified, right? I mean, 10 years, 15 years down the road, something completely changes. If we get six inches of the move, we need to go under the fence, we could. We could modify it. But ordinance is probably modified.
Okay.
So there is a process. There is a process.
Okay. I would just.
And there is a section in here that does say endangered species inventory.
Yeah.
The application show included endangered species inventory, including the England cotton tails. In them all probably better than I do. Landings and spotted turtles, blackberries, et cetera, and review and eventually. And eventual approval. For mainland fisheries, wildlife, many common environmental protection and other associated agencies will be involved in the application review. And permitting prior to final approval.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about in dangerous?
Yeah, so I think that captures what's endangered now. My thought processes, these things come in and they're here for 25 years or. I don't know what the lifespan is. Things change over time, so. You know, we just have to adapt and I don't know. You know, if we set an ordinance to say, well, now this other species needs, you know, accommodations to make sure that we can. You know.
So if we if we modify the ordinance, it would not affect anything that was already there. So if it says six inches now and Junction Road, six inches. We change the ordinance two years from now, Junction Road stays at six inches until it's disbanded.
Okay.
We're not going to go back and make them change the fence.
Yeah.
So it's anything done now. Done to this. Anytime we change it, that's all grandfathered and it's going forward.
Okay.
So. So it's kind of a catch 22. It's like the fence on 236 with the underway for the turtles.
Yeah.
They did that for the turtles.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's all I had. I mean, basically. I think I'm pretty focused on the Conservation Commission is obviously focused on open land, open areas. I would prefer it to be to for solar farms to be built already developed areas. Like agricultural fields or, you know, on rooftops or whatever, like rather than. Bumping it into already, you know, forested areas, but. You know, you can't put that in order. And so. I think. If there is an opportunity to update it to make sure that we're not introducing. Negative ecological effects by clearing open areas and not monitoring it, that would be helpful.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Great. Anybody here that would like to?
Mr. Vice Chair, just point the brak. Look, you know, I don't know how closely you followed this. So one of the things that we discovered in doing all this. Right now, the power grid is full. They can't accept anymore. And it would take about a $6 billion upgrade for the next. Solar farm company to come in to do the upgrades for the transformer systems in the area because this. The follow up they have, they can't take anymore. Don't get I don't get the exact terminology, but. Exact kilowattage back into the system that they're maxed out. So until. They upgrade the whole system and they estimated it's a $6 billion cost, it would pass on to a private vendor. So unless before anybody even started, they'd have to pay $6 million to upgrade the system to go solar farm. So. Then bad chance right now for probably a few years, that's probably not gonna happen.
Okay.
Just that'd be my guess unless, I mean, somebody could come in. They have $6 million, upgrade the grid and we're building a solar farm, but.
I knew that there was an application that had been put into the planning board. Often, or it was in between Old South and Vice. I just didn't know what the status was of that.
They backed up.
Oh, they backed up.
Company, company sold it to another company. Company building it, it wasn't profitable, they sold it to another company. I don't know what that landowner is gonna do. But that solar farm company backed up.
Where was the job?
Whole south.
Yeah, that's an interesting lot, but it has wetlands as well as looking at that. Okay. That's good to know that I'm on board capacity.
Great. Anybody else? Counsel?
I just had taken a note at reference to the technical guidance. It stated January 8, 2021, and. The heading is section four for D A C F Solar Side Invest Management Practices. And you specifically were referencing. What is it? The removal of the decent plans.
Thanks. Like this, though, more comment will. Close the public hearing at six four. Now, do I need, we need to do a. A board vote for the Board of Assessors or can we just go like? We can just open that. All right, we'll open the Board of Assessors. Meeting. Ready to state the time at six four one. The review, right, that's the review for amended assessing agent authority.
Yep. So the first thing is. Laura, did you give them a sample of wording?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, three pros.
I gave them the current and the proposed, which isn't real obvious because I didn't highlight everything. Sorry. Basically changing A if that's.
More change. Sorry, it looks like we're changing the the amount from from 400,000 to 150,000. Right?
Could be.
Yes.
If I may, Madam Chair and Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, there seems to be a couple of ways you could interpret the policy. So when A, when it says the assessing agent shall have authority to grant or deny abatements and the supplementals up to and including assessed values of $400,000. I can discuss what the intent was when this was first. Developed, but intent doesn't mean diddly unless it's clear on paper. So are you basically saying the assessing agent has to come to you if the property involved? Is assessed at $400,000 or more? Or are you saying the assessing agent has to come to you? If the amount of money involved? For the abatement or supplemental is $400,000.
Right, this is the discussion myself, the clarity, the stuff that we've all had. Period has including assessed values. You would, the only thing we can assess value on is personal property or residential property. Of property. So to me, it's an assessed value of 400,000 of a property. And what we'd like to change it to is. That the assessing agent shall have the authority to grant abatements or supplements up to and including dollar amounts of 150,000. Regardless of property valuation, then over that amount. It can come to you. This will take care of all the small little things that. You know, it's an amount. I mean, you can change that amount. I don't care. We just, just, I'm trying to keep the, you guys have an assessing meeting. Every month.
I think this makes sense. So so just, I just want to make sure I understand this. So I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but if I look at the abatements that we have coming coming up. After this sort of business, assuming we move forward with the recommendation from you all. This evening to change the language, change. The amount to 150,000 for abatements or supplementals versus assessed value, then that would basically mean that these. Abatements, I think I looked at them, all three of these would not be ones that you would have to come to us. Because the amount, okay.
It's it's just whatever, how much you want to do. If you want to. You know, and I I did a research. There are some towns that have it higher than that because of values today. Lodged all, but they have a lot of commercial. All the towns have it lower. Some towns have none. It all depends on. How many times the food wants to do. You know, need to do assess. To do that.
Well, it also depends on what we want to consider an amount and why we're there. We're granting an abatement for over $100,000. I'd like to know. I I'd like to have a say in it. If you want to set it at 50 or 75, that would take care of every one of these.
Yeah.
But I think. Hundred grand, me sitting here representing the people, I should know before we do it. It's just my own personal opinion.
I agree with that, John.
Saying it, I guess, more than just, I know we know, we find out, but I'd like to say in it before we did it.
Yeah, I I'd be I'd be good with dropping it to maybe 50 or 75,000, but I think. I mean, I can sort of speak again, I know it doesn't mean anything because it's not the words on the paper, but the intention behind this. Delegation of authority to the assessing agent really was to get to a place where we, you know, weren't having to have a board of assessors meeting every meeting for for smaller abatements. And so I think if we change the language and focus more on the abatement amount and. Drop the dollar amount, I think that accomplishes the same goal, but is like a little bit more clear in terms of the language and the. Whatever this thing is called. Your policy.
I just wanted to be clear that when you talk about the 50, 75 or 100, that would be the abatement amount rather than the tax amount.
Correct.
Then the new proposed version. Is a missing B from the original one, which I think is worth having. There are cases when an owner, the wrong owner is billed, and that's how you definitely determine illegal assessment, right? And so I can fix that by abating the full amount to the wrong owner and then doing a supplemental of the exact same amount to the correct owner. And so it's a wash, but the amounts are going to be higher than the limit that.
Right, which would be fine.
So so I'm thinking, I'm just saying on the proposed one, that part is missing.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I'm just, I'm just.
That's a good call out. I think that that should be included in the new one.
Yeah, that just streamlines everything, makes it easier for both.
Yeah.
That's. I again, it's apples to apples, just crossing off. That's that's fine. I said, I I mean, everything here, everything we have in front of us right now, right, is is.
I just plugged in a number. I just wanted the discussion, so I don't care.
I just.
It's 50. You?
It's up to the council, Board of Assessors, as to what they feel comfortable with.
How many, how many, I guess, the other side, how many do you see over 50?
Well, I do have this year's spreadsheet from, so take a look here.
Like, I think we're and we're especially interested in, like, the outliers.
We have. Two that were over 50. That are not supplementals. We take care of tree growth penalties. Those are going to be over. Amount. So we do have that. The town closed for sold back up or closed properties. So we did a supplemental that was. The value of that was 299,000. So there's that. So there's different scenarios, but as far as corrections. That are over 50. As abatements, there were two this year.
Yeah, so we, I mean, it's really minor. If we set it at 50, everything under 50, you can do business as usual, no issue. And anything over. We have a 50, 20 minute meeting. If everybody's okay with that.
And then we include. B from the current policy where. For instances where the wrong owner is billed. Do we need to? Push this to another meeting because we don't have that item in the policy for this evening?
Just include it in your motion.
Okay. Okay, I can make a motion. I, Mr. Vice Chair, motion to. Sign. The updated delegation of authority to the assessing agent dated February 14, 2023. With the following amendments from what was published on the website for bullet. A, we're going to be adjusting that to read supplementals up to and including dollar amounts of $50,000. And including an additional. Bullet to read in instances where a wrong owner is billed, requiring identical abatement and supplemental amounts, the assessing agent shall have the authority to grant the abatement and supplemental regardless of the assessed value.
Second. All right, motion in a second. Any other comments? I just would ask, does having Bernard's name make this weaker or stronger? Is it? Yeah, so it. Or not decides to move to the Caribbean in a month. Now, we don't have a verb. Do we have back and put in? Mr. Mrs. Smith.
No, no, it's the positions for the assessing, the assessing agent, that's your job. And those policies addressing the position.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll take a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I may yet passes five zero. Okay, moving on to the two abatements nine, 10, and 11. Not sure how we go about this.
Okay, take them individually. So they're numbered. I would ask the assessor to present number nine, then then present number 10, then number 11. Have a vote on them individually.
Okay. All right, so number nine is. A value abatement of 33,900. Would you like to? Is the new authority active right now? Or do you want?
No, these these have to be voted on by the council.
Okay.
So because they were of the old, they were submitted under the old policy.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, so this one is a property is 39 Water Side Lane. And this was a property that was under construction. I visited the property last spring. The owner wasn't home. I left the car. Then in October, I got information that the property was not complete as of April 1. And so with photographic evidence, I was able to make a determination that it was 90% complete instead of 100. And so. I am recommending an abatement and that dollar figure is 33,900.
So just to summarize this one, basically, the expected. Day, this is a construction project, I'm assuming. Or renovation. So we were expecting it to be complete. It isn't. So the overall value is less. That's the gist of it.
My workflow is a permit pass every spring, so I'm visiting, you know, several hundred properties to determine the level of completion as of April 1. There are many times when, you know, an owner is at home and it's difficult, especially if it's on the interior to determine. This particular owner had a. What is it called? Like a limited certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy that was issued in January. Of that year. So three months later, I thought felt it was reasonable to assume that the property was complete since it was almost complete in January. Those are the types of things, decisions that I make on a regular basis. They're wrong because I have no other information to help me. So the taxpayer reached out to me this past fall. I was able to make that correction and. Well, recommend the connection. Does that help?
Yes, thank you, Berna.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move we grant the updated value of $33,900. On the location at 39 Water Side Lane map, lot number 015 tack 045. Motion in a second. All in favor? Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I mean, yes, motion passes five zero. On to 10.
So payment number 10 is for One Sweet Sue's Way owned by James and Angelo Theos. And this is about a land assessment. He had combined his acreage. To two, two lots into one lot effective last year. And he had told me after the values were set that there was approximately six acres of wetland. And wetland will get a discount. So I applied the discount and the difference would be $6,400 in value. So it's a nominal abatement of $92.06. And I was able to confirm the wetlands through the aerial photography, a visit to the property and also on a plan. It was actually listed the acreages.
Any other questions? In motion? Chair, I move that we grant the abated value of $6,400. The address, One Sweet Sue's Way, payment number is 2023 tech 10. Map location is 010 tech 043 tech 2.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, motion passes five zero.
Actually, no, with this, they go about buying the other day, never seen the.
Actually, no, with this, they go about buying the other day. Never seen the road until the other day.
And number eleven?
Okay, abatement number eleven is for Laura Eaton at One Hemlock Ridge Lane. I'm recommending an abatement for this property as well. She had contacted us, she's selling her house and was looking at her property record card, which indicated she had forty-eight hundred and twenty-three square feet of living area. She said, I don't have that much space. And I said, I'd be happy to come out and take a look, measure, and make sure, you know, see what, what the issue may be, if there's any issue. So, so I went and made a number of corrections. The main one is that she was correct. She, there was an error on the property record card. And in fact, the home had two thousand seven hundred and ten square feet. I was able to figure out why that error happened. It had spent on her account for a few years. And I am recommending an abatement. The difference in value between square footage and a couple other corrections ended up being a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred. So it was more sizable with a tax of corresponding to that of one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Bernard, did you say that you were able to figure out why we had forty-eight hundred versus twenty-six hundred?
There's a, you know, it's a data entry error.
Okay, I figured.
Few years ago, plugged in the square, the wrong square footage for the footprint of the dwelling era, area. And it should have been eight hundred and thirty square feet, and it was over two thousand in that data entries bucket. So that made
Thanks.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Vice Chair, I move we grant the abatement of one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred dollars to the property on One Hemlock Ridge Lane, abatement number is two zero two three tech eleven. That lot is zero zero two tech twenty-five tech.
Second.
In motion, the second, all in favor, Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, motion passes five zero. That should conclude our assessors meeting tonight. Yes, close the assessors meeting at six fifty-eight. And open our regular meeting. And.
Thank you, Bernard.
And do our roll call, address that Mallory again is offsite today, so she's joining us from Zoom. That's why we're doing roll call votes. So Mallory here and the, the rest of the counselors are all present. So we'll move to approval of the town council meeting minutes for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Vice Chair, a motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as written.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Mallory?
I, yes.
John?
Hi.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jess?
I.
I mean, yes, motion passes five zero. On to the treasurer's warrant.
Vice Chair, I move we sign the treasurer's warrant dated two nine, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million four hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents.
Second.
Note, there is a school payment in there of seven hundred and twenty-eight, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And a county payment of three hundred and eighty-three thousand.
There's a million dollars.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, Mallory?
Yes.
Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
Jess?
I.
And I mean, yes, passes five zero. Reports and presentations. Comprehensive plan update have all.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me again. Sorry, I missed a couple weeks ago, I guess, after the third day is of whatever. I.
No power.
And I thank, thanks to your husband for clearing my driveway with his chainsaw.
No, no problem. I'll tell him you said that.
So for you folks who don't know me, Paul Schumacher, I'm Director of Southern Planning and Development Commission, we are doing the town's comprehensive plan. Started about a year ago, I think, more or less. And I just wanted to give you an update on that. Jess and Jeff have been attending a number of meetings. And I, we're, we're approaching the end of sort of the, the first part of that. There were basically two phases to that, a three-phase process. One of the phases, I think, actually included doing the survey, which I can talk about in a minute. The other one was to do an inventory, which is the first part of any comprehensive plan, a lot of data collection. A lot of sort of grunt work, just finding out what's existing in town and, and what it all means. So we're coming to the end of that. And actually, in a couple of weeks, I think we'll be finishing that portion of the inventory. So just some observations, I guess. First, it's been a really great committee to work with. I don't know, we say that about comprehensive planning committees. But it, this one has been very good to work with. And, and I wanted to thank Jeff and Jess for coming to those meetings as well. So we have the two inventory sections to complete land use and physical capacity, and then we should essentially be done with those first, first parts of the plan. We had a budget of twenty-eight thousand four hundred, and I think we spent about eighteen thousand of that. So we're at the point where between finishing the remainder of the inventory and doing some outreach, which I'll describe in a sec, in a second, we will you know, I think we'll, we won't even hit that number as we end that first part of the plan. There was another part of the plan that we can talk about. It's really the guts of the plan, which is coming up with strategies and ideas. And that will hopefully, that will take place over the course of the spring and summer, and hopefully we can be completed in the fall. So I think when we entered into this, we had always had that budget for the first couple of sections. And then we were going to approach you folks again, hopefully at this time of year and during your budget season, see what, what kind of additional resources might be needed to finish it off. And I think that's where we're at. You don't need to talk about that now, but I'm happy to do that if you want, or I can talk to Jennifer and whatever, Tim, and you know, whatever, however, however you want to approach that. No, I don't think there needs to be a lengthy discussion or analysis on it. So we do want to hold a public informational session. I think it's important to get some public input, at least let people know where we're at. There's a lot of good information, a lot of good data, a lot of good mapping. One of the things we've been talking about is how to do that in view of all the other things that you folks are doing. The traffic study. I know Denise has some things lined up. You know, budgets, et cetera. So I don't, you know, I think our initial thought was that we would do it sometime in March. I, but as we were chatting, I don't think we, we want to get it, you know, whatever we're doing, get it confused with whatever Sabego is coming up with, as you sort of look at the downtown and the traffic situation. Although that is going to be a critical part of what gets included in the plan. So I think, you know, I mean, that's still an object for discussion on how we want to approach a public meeting and what that might look like, but we do want, we do need to do that. So we don't, you know, you just don't throw a plan out there at the end and hope the best. So we need to get some, some public participation. One of the other things we had suggested was having just four targeted focus groups, and I think we're open to figuring out what those might look like. There'd probably be ones related, related to conservation, and open space, housing, economic development in the downtown. I don't know whether we want to do a traffic one, because you're already going to be doing that. But when I say focus groups, I think we were pretty clear. We, I don't, we don't want like a long, we want one, one meeting with, you know, very targeted questions and answers and participation. Because, you know, we're, we're moving fairly well with, with the plan and the process. So we don't, we would rather not go off the rails at this point, I guess. So that's sort of where we are there. I, I I hope that by the fall, we can be ready for public hearing and, and to put it in front of you folks. That may be a bit optimistic, but you know, not necessarily. There's a lot of good stuff in the old plan. A lot of ideas in the old plan that were never actually adopted, but are still good ideas. And we need to sort of take a look at those. And then finally, we have the survey results, which we included. Boy, these were entertaining. The, and Jack previously called me and, and actually, because I, so we, we had like key takeaways. And we mentioned that, you know, we received one thousand two hundred and thirty responses, which is a ton. Actually, when you consider how many we sent out, which was like thirty-three hundred, that's almost thirty-three percent of the people who we sent a survey to or asked to respond, responded, which is like almost unheard of. And that's a lot of people to respond to a survey. So those were really good. The, the, some of the other takeaways, what a surprise. Southport is concerned about traffic and congestion. The interesting part of sort of the survey, and I had talked to Denise about it, is that we, you know, we compared it to what the survey said. It's almost the same survey that we, was done about fifteen to twenty years ago. To see what, how people's opinions had changed and et cetera. It's obviously had a lot of new people in. Traffic was big then, and it's still big as far as an issue. People enjoy their historic village and its small-town nature, the community. That's why they want to live here. One of the other things that sort of grew in interests and in, I wouldn't call it concern, but in, in, that people value is open space and natural, natural resources. That sort of saw a large jump from back in two thousand and three to now. And I think that people support reasonable development and growth. One of the interesting things was, I think about fifteen, twenty years ago, there was a lot of answers related to growth that said, we're growing too fast, we're going to slow down. That's not the case, which is sort of surprising. It's not the case anymore. It's not, I mean, and it's always been like, people always think we're growing too fast, but in that, I think we're at a level in growth that is not sort of alarming to a lot of people. And I think it's because maybe, I think it's because the town has been, has done a good job of dealing with it. So there's other things in there, quite a few, actually. Some of them weren't as clear as I think we would like. Issues related to cannabis and retail stores and things were as clear as mud as far as the survey went. So I don't think we got a lot of direction there, but you know, maybe we will at some point. So you, you know, you have these, they're great. And I think I, I, I think on the website, I'm not sure. And by the way, the website's great. And the, I told Tim and Jennifer and Bernard that the GIS system is massively helpful for doing work in town. It's, it's like way, way overdue. And it's really helpful due to help as we were sort of doing this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from folks. I don't know if there's anything else you want to chat about while I'm here. You know, there's, I can talk housing, you know, if you want.
Hey, Paul, I have just a, a minor question. I'm I thoroughly enjoy the survey results and reviewing these, but I noticed for a couple of the pie charts, there was like a pretty significant portion of people that didn't respond. And I didn't know if like you had any insights that you, you probably don't, but like, for example, like the how many people live in your household? And, and this doesn't matter, but like, almost fifty percent of people didn't respond to that question. Just thought was interesting, whereas like a lot of the other surveys, or sorry, a lot of the other questions was like almost the, the full.
Right.
All of the, the survey respondents, I guess. So that's just sort of piqued my curiosity. I don't know if you know anything.
Know why that would. I mean, usually they don't respond to asking what your income is.
Yeah, the mortgage one, like the monthly mortgage one, that one makes sense because it's a similar story, but.
Yeah. I don't know why that would be.
No worries, just curious.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other questions, Tom?
Just thank you for coming and speaking with us. It's been great working with you. I'm thankful to hear just that we're moving forward with some informational sessions and just wanted to keep those in mind as we, because there'll be other things on our plate.
Right. I, I mean, if I may, I mean, do you have any thoughts on when you, I mean, I juggle schedules, which is getting incredibly difficult to do. And I don't know when the other stuff is being lined up. So I don't, I mean, if you, and I can wait until next meeting.
Well, so March is full. March is completely full. The rest of February is taken, so nothing's available till April. March is full of budget and anything else that might come up. So the earliest we could even get to anything would be probably mid-April.
But I'm but I think like, sorry, to Paul's earlier point about with the Sabego technic stuff, do we, Tim, do you have a sense of like when they're going to want to have their public meeting?
March, we're going to put that in there too.
Okay, that's already slotted for March again.
Yeah, we've got information. There's a couple delays, been a delay there. We should have their information by, I'm hoping the second or third week in March, so you should get it. I'm hoping to get it. Then, as soon as we get it, we'll share what we have with you.
But aren't we, am I, am I making this up that we were going to have some additional like public hearing?
I would assume you're going to want to.
Yeah, I think so. And I do think we don't want the two like traffic and stuff, it certainly plays a role in the compliance. If we want to maybe put some space between those two.
Yeah.
Public meetings.
Budget and traffic is what you're gonna, March is gonna be a full month. I would say, I would say for April, we'll touch bases with you and let you.
Right.
I can look at the schedule the next couple of days. We can touch base, I'm gonna touch base on the second part of this anyway, so we'll we'll get the schedule. Does that, is that helpful at all?
No, that's fine. Actually, I, I think it gives some clarity because then I think maybe we can run these focus groups, where, where we weren't sure what we were going to do, but maybe we can do those prior to the public informational meeting, which would give us sort of more things to talk about. And.
Yeah, and I'd just say, just thanks, Paul, for, for everything with, with the process. It's been a massive help as well as Reagan, and it's been good. And also just want to mention the committee too. Being a part of putting together, putting together the committee and the people that came together and volunteered to be a part of that. Good that they they've done that and appreciative of it. And, and also just really impressed with the, the survey results. The committee put a lot of thought into how to get those surveys out there. I think it paid off. They could really get a, a good amount of input. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. I think we're, we're all good here. Excellent. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, public comment. Start with anybody on Zoom that has any public comment? See any, anybody here in the room? No? All right.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move with the council will to move up number two, new business up ahead of the unfinished business, so we can let Mr. Flynn get on with the rest of his evening.
Again.
Great. Motion second, all in favor, Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jess?
I.
And I mean, yes. Passes five zero. So we'll start with new business number two, acceptance of Bittersweet Lane.
Mr. Vice Chair, I will take lead. Jim had came in and he's been working with Jen on this and started before I got here. So Jen was kind of lead on this. And I'm going to turn that over to her.
I followed suit with how we accepted Colleen last year. So I did this document for the council and it includes the letter that James Flynn asked him for the town to take over the road. Also, another letter from James Flynn saying that he understands that he knows and understands that there is some stormwater pond work that is remaining to be done in the spring of twenty twenty-three when the wind allows. Here is an email um in the packet from November tenth from Christie Robaska, but they did a walk through with um Flynn's, the HOA, coenforcement, our staff, um, and there's a summary of ponds and the work that needs to be done, which um to put in his letter. And then there's a formal letter from Christie Robaska of the same email from the walkthrough. There is a subdivision plan with the findings of that, which was approved by the self-aware planning board chair, Paul Steinhauser, on February first, two thousand seventeen. Um, we have a letter in here from town staff, Jenny Red- Jay Reddy Marker, highway superintendent, has inspected the road, the curbing, the sidewalks and the drainage. Um, and we also have a letter from engineer John St Pierre, previous employee, who was watching the construction at the time. He had inspected the road during the construction process, including the subgrade preparation, subways and base gravel, fine grading and base painting. Also was observed of the water in the sewer construction during the project. We also have a copy of a letter that was written to main department of environmental protection as required prior to acceptance of this road. And we also have the warranty deed in form RETTD, which has been reviewed by the town board. So with all of that information, we feel
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we authorized uh the town manager to accept Bittersweet Lane as a town-owned public right-of-way. With one correction, we have to fix owned instead of owed.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor or any comment?
I have a question. I'm sorry, John went forward with the motion too fast before I could ask this.
I apologize.
That's okay. Um, I was just wondering if it's common practice for us to accept something before it is in full completion. And I'm all I'm just asking because there are still on the docket that need to be completed, like the removal of Rosa Regosa. And I understand that these are um things that cannot be done until the spring because landscaping, weather permitting. I completely understand that. Um, so just with these things being undone. Do we take the chance and accept it with the possibility of these not getting done? That's my question.
Past precedents, we did it on Cole Road. Oh, we did?
There was a, yeah, we have the letter of agreement from
So you can make that a lot of agreement binding tonight by putting that, amending your motion, saying that you will but that that's binding that that work has to be um accomplished this spring. So you can make that a conditional, a condition of and it does, it does say that. From the council that uh the LCC developer undertakes to complete the remaining items of Bittersweet. So in a court, basically this becomes a legal contract to me and town council and them, making them liable to do it. So we we can hold them accountable. And that's what I'd asked for. So I would say that any motion, amend a motion to say and make sure that this is accomplished as soon as reasonably possible.
We also have money in escrow, a little over ten thousand dollars. Um, she would share, he does the work. He will not get that money back.
And and last one always I I'm comfortable, I I in a short time I've been here, I've known Jim and their developments and know that he'll be up to their worth that they wouldn't. They're worthy of their contracts.
Let me amend that. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept uh Bittersweet Way, yeah, Bittersweet Lane as a town-owned public right-of-way. With the condition of the work that needs to be completed will be completed as soon as possible in spring of twenty twenty-three per the letter.
Second.
So point of order, I believe Mallory needs to do that second or no?
Because
No, because I redid the whole thing. No, you redid the whole thing.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we are gonna act on the old, the other motion.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, motion in a second. Any other comment?
Uh, I just have a question. Once it's um accepted by us, do we, somebody needs to go and update the state to show that spars, like I remember some sort of G I S, some sort of system that would show which roads were to go to follow up later. And that had that had to involve downstairs.
That that would be part of the deed or the Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just, just for Jim sitting here, I want to give him a chance to say something, but I don't know. We have motion in a second on the table. Do I need to? Can I give him the time?
You can organize him.
Yeah, Jim, did you?
No, I I I thought was having a good question regarding uh, you know, the work that needs to be completed, just to reassure everybody that the way this was, you know, made up by Christine Bosker. Too positive. The road acceptance um is all the is is all the equipment, plant things, and it's been sitting in the town right away. The work that needs to be completed is work that's outside of the town right away, not part of the road. And so you know, ourselves as developers or the HOA has to maintain that in any case. So it doesn't really impact the road, but it's still a good question. We have, we've made it into the HOA. And then really, they're gonna take that over at some point. There's also funds available as part of that HOA for me to integrate that that works. They want, they want to take it, we want to give it to them, but we don't. But if this, this is all outside of the town. That's why Christine got the ratio, that's sort of two pieces.
Thank you. All right, we have the motion and the second on the table. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Mallory?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I'm yes, motion passes five zero. All right, now we're, we jump back up to unfinished business, right? You're back in order. Unfinished business, number one, request for proposal for town office needs assessment.
Go ahead, yeah. So uh, I didn't know, we put out a request for proposal um to do a study. We're not gonna now, I'm sorry. Town office solely study. We had three companies that submitted proposals. Um, we took one of them out, but their proposal was twenty thousand dollars higher. We took them through that. Then we reviewed their bids. They met the criteria of the RFP. So we did a uh uh scoring interview with them last week. We, we did, we did a interview with one on Thursday, Jess and Mallory said it, so they can chime in. And then we did one on Monday. Um, we ranked them by up by what we got out of this. Um, I gave you the sheets that show kind of the advantages of going with either one. Ones out of Bangor, which is um Haley Ward, they're a little cheaper, they're at thirty uh six thousand. And then the other one is Port City. They're a little more expensive, about the forty-six or forty-eight thousand, all inclusive. Uh, Port City is local, they're, they've done a lot more work around us. Either or, that's what we're down to. So I'll turn it over to the council to answer any questions and get your thoughts. And these are the proposals, uh, my, they were got sent to you, so you had them to review. Um, I would ask that the chair and Jess weigh in on um you know, what their ideas, what they thought. Um, because you know, this, the notes are from my, in my staff perspective, so I haven't heard from them yet.
Mallory, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'm happy to um kind of give my two cents. Um, just keep me honest, Thursday was Port City and Monday was Haley, right? Um, so Tim, just so I'm clear, the the stuff that you sent us, it am I like unveiling, it it seems like there's a clear recommendation from from you and staff? Am I unveiling anything that I shouldn't be at this point, or do you just have my opinion?
Whatever you want. I
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a recommendation, either one. If I, if I had to recommend, I go with Port City because they're local and they've done Elliot, York and other areas. So I think they know the, if you will, the the lay of the land better. Um, with dollar values and construction costs. So I think we'll probably get a better accurate assessment. That's, that's just my approach. I'll, I'll be, do whatever you want. It's one's substantially more expensive. It's whatever you guys want. And so
Um, so I, I think I uh I agree with you, Tim. Uh, my impression um between the two was that I I definitely leaned more toward Port City, the group we talked to on Thursday. Um, not necessarily because they're like proximity to us, but I just felt like um their presentation was seemed to be much more detailed. Um, and I think you um sort of summarized well, I think in one of your memos, Tim. Um, like the, that we probably wouldn't get renderings from the other um group. And three D images, et cetera. They're, they're further away. Um, so yeah, I think they, I mean, I think they both would do a great job, but I think if I had to pick one or one of the two, I would pick Port City as well.
Yes.
I um, I thought very highly of both presentations. Uh, the one thing that perked up my ears with Haley Ward was that most of their services were in-house. So I think um Port City was a smaller kind of crew. So if there were other things like Haley Ward would um kind of facilitate those internal and not need to bring in others of big matter experts to do so. Um, it also perked up my ears that they had a grant writer on staff. Um, and um they're, they seemed um very easy to communicate work and I I and I'm only bringing that up because we'll have to somehow communicate whatever comes out of this to the public. Um, and they seem very
Because any, any, any questions or comments?
Um, I was just wondering if anybody knows if either of these companies have more of a familiarity with um historical buildings? If one or the other group like has a better
So Port City is is done, what, what, what I can tell you is Port City, you look at their, their brochure, they're, they did um York Town Office and York Town Hall, which was, they also did Sanford. So those are both historical buildings in New York. It was out, I think it was that and Sonic Building. And I can't remember exactly, but it's in, it's in their book, you can look that. Um, so I, I think that, and I can't, I can't speak Haley Ward. I didn't see exactly what they had.
Even further away.
Right. Um, so I just, and I know that, well, Elliot, which is kind of in the same boat, we're in, that Port City is doing Elliot right now. In addition, a renovation in addition.
The other company uh was in Lincoln, Scout Lincoln.
Yeah.
And Bangor were the examples that they had sent to us through our, so. Where the other ones were, what city was way more local, very much.
Yeah, we saw, I saw those. Um, I just didn't know if one or the other company had more experience with, you know, with that.
Yeah, I can't, I I guess I can't answer that accurately. I think they both have it probably, but I I don't know.
Tim, have you been in touch with Elliot's town manager at all to find out how that project is going?
Talked to Mike about it. Um, he just, he said, he just had great recommendations about Port City that they're very um very thorough, very detail oriented and they're very much about the end goal of whatever the town wanted. So in Elliot, they're doing a renovation and an addition. And that's, that's what they're doing down there. And you just found him very good to work with.
So I'm gonna, yeah, I obviously I didn't sit in on these, but I'm gonna go with my standard statement I've said before, right? This is why you, why we hired you. This is your deal. We pay you to do this. I trust your judgment. And if you're telling Port City, I'm good. That's, as you said, that's what we pay you and Jen to do.
My only other um thing to consider, and I reviewed this information that was sent to us last week. So I can't remember if it was in there or not. Um, turnaround rates for information being provided back to us. Because I know this is kind of a time sensitive matter where our boilers are going in our current town hall.
Well, yeah, we'll still have to fix the boil.
Right.
So we had asked for two months for that. So the reason I did an RFP as opposed to a bid, a bid locks them into the agreement, RFP is more negotiable. So because of the possibility of unknowns, when they start flipping ceiling tiles and looking up into the cock loft and crawling on the roof upstairs and they could find stuff that they may come back and say, listen, we need more time to get the engineers to look at this. So it's supposed to be two months, but they, they said, you know, it'll depend if we find any rabbit holes that we have to face down or, you know, Collins specialty people for and stuff like that. And they both said the same thing. They said, you know, it could be unknowns, but we're, we're, you know, we're on that timeline.
Okay.
But we think
So they were both made aware?
It was in the RFP. The two months was in the RFP. But I also did advise both parties when we interviewed with them, that if they ran into problems, you know, they couldn't, they could request an extension.
Okay.
Both uh organizations said that they had capacity at this point to.
Yes. Both had capacity to do it.
Um, and you know, obviously didn't have much really to go off of other than the the memos and whatnot, but it I appreciate the memos and um I think, you you know, obviously the Port City seems to have a really well-rounded approach to it and I appreciate the what you added in on the memo there, but what they actually said, you know, about the the three D model and stuff. Is that, would that three D model be of our current town hall? As I read it, I see it as if they deem that the current town hall needs to go away and they said we would come up with a plan for the next. We'd get a three D model of the current town hall or our brand new.
Correct. Yes, whichever one, whichever one they, so then, well, we kind of, one of the things, questions on a project was to pick the best solution going forward. And that's, so when Elliot hired, when I talked to Mike Sullivan, they hired Port City. And they, they knew they needed some renovations. They knew they needed more space, but they didn't know why. So Port City came down, did a, did an evaluation of facility, came back and gave them like two ideas and said, here's one, it'll cost this much, here's another, it'll cost this much, and here's the renovation. So they, they were like completely, they had no idea what to do. Port City gave them the answer. And they said, oh, we really like that one. And that's the one they picked to go with, and that's the one they're putting in front of the taxpayers. So I, I suspect, you know, when we talked to to both of them, we said, you know, especially with Port City, that's what they said is, you know, we're, we're gonna go look at the town office and then we're gonna, we're either gonna tell you, this is good, you can remodel this, it's worth this, da, da, da. Or this isn't worth doing. Here's what you can do if you went offsite. This is what you could look like on a, you know, da, da, da. You know, we gave them some some rough, specific based from my class of architect and engineering, what we needed. A part of this is them to come in and talk to us. And what I liked about both of them is they had a matrix for to be able to design a building for our need. So it's not like, it's not, they're just gonna wishy-washy it. There's a matrix. That matrix is designed by talking to staff and the council and asking, what are we looking for? What's this? What do we need for chambers? How many people do we think sit in the chamber, in the council chambers? How much room do you need? And and by that, they build a matrix. And that's how they'll tell us, well, if you do the town office, there's this, but you're gonna have this much space left over. You gotta figure out what to do it. Or if we build a new town office in the matrix, here's that. Or if we build a new town office in the matrix, here's that. So th- there was methods to the madness, which is what I want. I want back to come to council, be able to say to the public, if we do this. Gonna cost this, and if we do this, it'll cost this, this is one.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I, the three, three plant, three D models are are fun and pretty and stuff as long as they're. But if they give us the the facts and so that we can better make a better decision, that's what I'm excited about, so. Yeah, I'm I'm with John. I I I. Trust your, what you guys have to say. You guys spent the time, you know, and uh trust you guys, but it seems like Port City. It'd be a really good option for us.
Before we make this motion, is there a number perhaps? I'll make the motion, but they're gonna know how much. You want, I mean, I can make it around some of no more than fifty. Is there a forty-six? I would do that number, that number is forty. You want me to go with that? Awesome. Well, you might as well, they're saying it's all inclusive. If there's anything more, I think it would be only fair to come back to the council and say, look, they run into this. And then that makes the, that'd make the public aware of what they run into, make you aware and say, we need extra money for the project.
Fantastic.
I would feel that better doing it that way.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we we award the project of the town hall.
Facility study.
The town hall facility study uh to Port City Architecture and the amount of, no, the amount to not exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. To come from the town hall CIP account.
Any other Congress meetings or comments? All right, all in favor? Mallory?
Yes.
Yes, Melissa?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
And I'm a yes, motion passes five zero. Um, that puts us to new, new business, number one, uh possible action uh toward on the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Vice Chair, I.
Sorry, um, I shot, I'm sorry, ask this, um, when we were discussing it at the beginning, but. On the very last page, um. The table that is included.
Table A, yeah.
It does not, the planning board asked us to. Adjust so solar farms was its own entity instead of as a public utility. So, and at the end of the ordinance, um, is the planning board's request for us to do so. And with all of the paperwork that I have, solar farms is, was not made its own entity. And a follow-up question to that is. Um, with this being an ordinance and this includes recommendations from the planning board, shouldn't we? Take care of those recommendations so they can be taken out of the ordinance? So it's.
You can't change anything now. It's this, this is the document. It's come to a vote.
Okay.
We either have to vote on this document, and then we would go back and so, you know, you're not voting on table A, you're voting on a document.
Okay.
Then they'll go back and we we'll go back and they would have to do an amendment to the table A.
Okay.
That's a separate change.
Well, but I see Melissa's point though, because. So I, I, on the table A point, I had the exact same thought that you did, Melissa, around, oh my, like, the solar, solar farm isn't even in the table. That's in this document, but I I then I looked, and I don't know, I I was taking it to mean the the line right above it where it says add to A. Add to table A, land use solar farm for I one and I I two, major site plan review. All other zoning districts, no. Um, that that, I I thought, I I felt like that was sufficient to address the solar farm thing in the table. Obviously, once this goes to be published and included in our code and stuff, but we'll need to insert a new row. Um, but now that you bring this up, I'm seeing the whole section, planning board recommended ordinance modifications. Um, on page six of seven of the ordinance, um, to your point, Melissa, those are. Recommendations for the planning board and aren't necessarily, isn't necessarily ordinance language. So I mean, I I guess. Tim, given that, and our timeline is up at this, I I guess it would make sense for us to adopt this and then. Like quickly afterward, amend and remove that section.
Yeah, that's what I'd recommend, adopt it, and then. Um, I'm trying to see. Their recommended ordinance modification, so we'll do, build and pick that up.
And neither did any of us, until now.
Well, so ta- table A, they, in order to amend table A or change table A, that's a land use ordinance, that would be, that's a different piece. They could, if this gets passed, they can add that into it, I'm pretty sure. But as far as the planning board recommended ordinance modifications. They, that looks like that's a land use ordinance. Yeah, in relation to land use table A, that's talking about the land use table A. That that would have to be a a change in, in. A more separate ordinance for table A.
If I may, I totally disagree.
No, you can't disagree. I don't wanna hear it.
Tell us more, Barbara.
I believe the bottom of page six is where the planning board is actually making their recommendations. It's not part of the ordinance. Other than they're recommending that you apply these two definitions to solar farms and to solar arrays. And that table A is part of the whole process, just like it has been with other ordinances that we've done this to. So you're adopting these sections of the zoning ordinance plus table A.
So the, so the comments that we see aren't part of the ordinance, it's just.
Correct.
So that would disappear. So it would leave us only with, the only problem is that table A does not identify solar.
Well, they're saying here their recommendation is to add solar farms.
Okay, so us, I got you. Does that make sense to everybody else?
So Barbara, from your perspective. There isn't anything here we would need to amend after the fact?
Unless you don't like the language.
Right, so if we made a motion to. As, accept this, and then the recommendations would go into place, which would change table A.
Yes.
Because that's the recommendation of the, of the planning board. I think that's fair to.
Right, so you're gonna accept the performance standard for solar farms, including the addition of solar farms to table A. Done.
That makes sense, John, to you or?
I never disagree with what Barbara tells, and she's never been wrong.
Lloyd didn't pick it up, but if you wanna go with it, go ahead.
I'm rolling with it.
Mallory, you good with that?
Yep.
So, um. Shall I make a motion? I'll make a motion that we accept. This, uh, no, I need to, what do I need to um address for specifics for you guys? Just this ordinance? Accept the zoning ordinance. As written.
I think it's a, adopt the zoning ordinance.
Adopted zoning ordinance have presented.
Revision eight.
Revision eight dated February sixth, twenty twenty-three, and all its parts listed, including. The addition to table A.
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt the zoning ordinance, um, revision eight. Dated February sixth, twenty twenty-three, on all its parts with the um recommendations. Noted by the planning board, including uh. The changes to table A.
Yeah, that's sort of fine to that, so we know which zoning ordinance.
Okay, yes, zoning ordinance. Forty dash sixty-seven dot two performance standards for solar farms. Have a second?
Second?
I was muted, sorry.
Second, uh, any other? Comments? Uh, all in favor, Mallory?
Yes.
Yes, Melissa? Yes?
I.
And I'm a yes, motion passes five zero. New business number three, market analysis and action plan metrics.
Mr. Vice Chair, I will ask Denise to, she's on uh by Zoom. She handled this. I will ask her to zoom in and uh we only had one bid, so I will have her speak on that.
Hello, everyone. Uh, thank you for letting me participate by Zoom. Um. Um, the market analysis uh RFP was sent out um the same date, same return time as the one for the town hall. Um, building facility um study. Uh, we only had one response, however. But we got fortunate, and the one response we got was one that has an extensive amount of experience. They came at uh thirty thousand. We thought uh it would be more close to thirty-five thousand, so five thousand less was a a bonus for me. Um, all the planning work from this firm is going to be done within three months of the kickoff meeting. Key staff that are involved with this project have done market analyses, projects in Maine and throughout all of New England. Um, I personally worked with them on prior projects. Uh, since the company, Comon Associates, opened in nineteen ninety-nine, they've completed over fifteen hundred projects. In over forty-five states and in the United States Virgin Islands. Um, they've done everything from market analyses, action plan matrices. Um, to strategic plans, economic and fiscal impact studies, business retention and attraction initiatives. Um, what this project will allow us self forward to benefit from is they're gonna create a baseline uh community profile for us. Development of area profiles in comparison to other areas in the region, which include uh New Hampshire as well. And um they will also establish a real estate market opportunity analysis. And do interviews and focus groups, as well as aligning our opportunities and create our action plan matrix, which is what we requested. Projects that they've completed um include economic development plan for North Yarmouth. Um, and for Yarmouth Economic Development Market Analysis and Action Plan for Saco. They've done the outdoor recreation industry profile and strategy for Southern Maine, all of Southern Maine. They also have participated and been the lead staff for Scarborough Downs Development um Advisory Services. They did a housing needs analysis for the town of Kenabunkport. And they also, uh, most recently completed the main economic development strategy for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine for the entire state of Maine. So I believe that this positions um South Burwick really well to um. Engage in their services and and give us uh what we need to strategically market our community um for the future. Um, and if you have any other questions, I do have the proposal right here, and I happy to, happy to help answer any other questions.
Any questions? Jess?
Um, I I know that they're doing some interview and focus groups, and I know uh Paul was just here talking about kind of the focus group with the comprehensive plan, so. Just kind of throwing it out to you um to ensure, you know, um that we're staggering those and that, you know, if. If the same people are in those focus groups, it's kind of, you know, that these are two separate things and kind of drawing one mind if you can, because we have so many things going on. Right now, um.
Jess, that's, that's an excellent, excellent comment. Uh, that one neat thing is the comp plan, one of those chapters that is actually quite bare. Is the economic development one. So the focus groups will uh basically um. Basically be integrated between the two, and we'll have a more robust chapter uh as we move forward. So that's a really great, great question.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, Denise, I was just wondering if you reached out to any of the projects that were completed, because I may. Tell me, I hear you, show me, I understand type of person where you can tell. You've completed fifteen hundred projects, but how many people were satisfied with the projects that were completed?
Well, I personally worked with them in in two projects, and um I'm actually one of their references for. A couple of the uh, you know, other uh proposals they've put through, and I can attest that they are second to none. Uh, they leave no stones unturned, um, and they're very, very qualified. But I'd be happy if you wanted me to check out with others, but I can um pretty much verify that what they commit to, they um produce. And the action plan matrices that they have produced in other communities are are really being followed. And adhered to, so that that's really a good s- good sign. It's not a shelved analysis that um. Um, is not followed through on, and um they're, they're quite good. And the other piece is. One of their main vice principals or vice presidents, even though that the company's based out of Sarasota, Saratoga Springs, yes, I can talk. Um, but um they a- also have um. Their major principal, Jim Denises, lives right here in Scarborough, Maine, and and so very, very familiar. Krista Francy is gonna be the primary lead on this, and she has extensive experience and um a lot of great references as well.
I, one additional question, um. I know that Tim mentioned that the um the RFP for the town hall was negotiable. Um, so is there any wiggle room with this RFP? Because my concern is. With the awesome job that has been done on the comprehensive study, uh, the comprehensive plan study. I feel like a lot of the information does overlap, and we have. Our foot in the door with already answering some of the the questions that we would be. Seeking, you know, through this proposal as well. Um, like with a lot of community feedback of what they'd like to see here and demographics, we can get the residences report. So I'm just wondering if we can fine tune this proposal where maybe some of these items were actually. Have already been taken care of just to save us a little bit of money.
Um, that's an excellent question. Um, again, you know, I think the motion you folks. Could potentially entertain tonight is a not to exceed thirty thousand and leave it negotiable. That said. Um, I think a lot of their pricing was already based upon having conversations with the, with the town of South Burwick. In that they had a lot of the base data. These, these analyses generally run thirty-five to forty thousand, so the fact that they came in at thirty thousand. Was actually less than many of the other communities in Maine that they've already done. But um I think that if you make a motion to not to exceed thirty and then um give us the opportunity, Tim and I, to to negotiate a lower. Uh, cost and and see what we can do for add value, um absolutely a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay. Mallory, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
They have motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um, motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate a contract for the market analysis and action plan matrix. To be funded from the Pumpkin Town Tip District Fund in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second, um. All those in favor, Mallory?
Yes.
Yeah. Melissa?
Yes.
Jess? And I'm a yes, motion passes five zero. Thanks for your work on this, Denise.
Thank you all for your support, means a lot. Thanks, Denise. Bye-bye.
Brings us to ten minutes.
Department has used one thousand two hundred and eighty tons of salt so far this season, which is fairly low. Thirty thousand has been spent so far on storm cleanup for the removal of trees that were across the road. Um, which there is still a lot more to do. He is gonna be hiring a bucket truck so they can reach. All the broken um limbs that are sixty, seventy feet up. That's gonna be an additional twelve thousand dollars. Um, so he's picking away at it every time the highway crew has extra time, that's what they're doing.
See, a couple of people are reached out, and they told them to be patient. They are gonna clean up the sides of all the roads.
Absolutely. It may take them till fall, but they are working on it.
That's what I let him know.
They're trying.
Yeah. Yeah, um, and Jay's also got, working on his plan for roadwork for the upcoming season as well. For the police, they had five arrests, six accidents, sixty-five traffic stops. Lieutenant Upton went to Washington DC for a convention in health and safety and spoke to senators and representatives to get more funding. Officer Polke was given the honor of being the first South Borough Police Chaplain and was honored with a badge and a letter from our police chief. The fire department had eighteen calls in the last two weeks. Year to date is already a hundred and thirty-nine. Driver recertifications have all been completed. Um, first do software. Um, first due software program is now I've been running and working on backfilling important historical information, they're going, they're trying to go paperless at the fire department, which is great. Code enforcement has had four building permits, two renovations, one addition, one single family dwelling permit and six planning permits. Planning, uh, there is a developer trying to split a piece of land into three lots. Currently, three projects for the planning board are tabled for various different reasons. There's two ordinance changes going in front of the planning board, um, one is a similar for a sketch plan and the other one is the I-one and I-two setback requirements, they're considering changing those from seventy-five feet to forty feet to be more business friendly. And the planning board is also having their public hearing on the MS four, which is the stormwater changes at their next meeting. The library is having a Valentine's celebration tonight at seven. And they have a new coding program that's, um, Wednesday evenings and that's going well, he's got some attendance to that. Um, and they're suspending new, suspending book donations until after the May book sale, they're busting at the seams, they have a gentleman who's giving them ten thousand books. Sci-fi and, um, whatnot, so they're going to have a sale in May to try and get those books out to them. Uh, recreation, they're doing the Maine Mariners trip, that's on February eighteenth. AARP is set up to do tax preparation every Friday until, um, taxes are due. Seniors had seventy, seventy seniors participate in a luncheon last Wednesday and they had a fam that was there for them, well. Assessing last week sent out a hundred and ninety-five personal property tax declaration letters, most with Betty Business Equipment Tax Exemption applications. Working on estimate for growth, this will help us with our whole budgeting process to know get an early number on some new growth in town. Working on, um, tax maps that will be effective for April first. The town clerk is still having a hard time to fill the open position, so if you guys know anybody looking for part-time work, please send them to Barbara. Um, and no state elections in June, it will just be school budget. The transfer station, we've had some non-compliant citizens using their own bags, just just regarding that we're supposed to buy bags, they're using their own with a blue, white. Um, so when we see that now going forward, it will be reported to the police department.
Uh, there was somebody on Zoom that didn't like that comment.
That might have been, that might have been me, I'm sorry. My phone.
The tire disposal, um, has increased, um, for us to get rid of tires, supposed to the transfer station. Hazardous waste has been being received at the transfer station. Um, we start, we learned this this morning, actually, in a safety meeting, so we are going to start doing some training and education for staff and residents, that will becoming very soon. Let's talk to that. Um, economic development, technical revisions have been submitted to the Department of Economic and Community Development at the state level for final review and approvals of the tips. Traffic study and final report should be pretty much ready by the end of this month. Um, Denise had a volunteer start on the thirteenth and she'll be helping Denise with various projects. And Denise is also working with Jenny on amending the zone ordinance, as I mentioned before, um, to reduce the, the rentage and setbacks that I want in I-two zone. Finance, um, HR safety, we are, we are on revision number nine on the budgets, Tim and I have been living in the budget world. Uh, we are getting the tax reminder notices sent out for the March tax payments, those will be going out, I believe, the end of this week. And we've been working on all the job descriptions for the town, make sure that we have everybody's job description uh, up to date, I will be sending those all out to the department heads for review to see if we have any changes, so that will be all up to date. Take me away, Tim.
No, but keep going.
Sure. Um. We are moving some people around in their office positions, myself being one, we're moving back in with finance, John will be moving into where I am, closer to Tim, be his gatekeeper. Um, where finance is now, we'll be moving into the old council chambers up on the second floor and assessing, we'll be moving into finance, so it's just a bigger area for finance, because those are the girls that kind of need my help the most, so it makes sense. Um, and then it makes sense for John to be next to Tim. It made sense for us to be, but that close together for that first year, but let friends get spread their wings.
She doesn't have to hold my hand anymore.
I'm trying not to say that. All the staff evaluations are completed throughout, um, the whole town, we finished those yesterday, um, the RFPs, um, as we talked about, we had the interview last week and then yesterday for the final facility study. Leadership training for department heads will be starting in March, um, Ray Dell Court and Chief Ruger will be helping with those, um, they've both been doing a lot of training and analysis with that. We have a new custodian that will be starting next week, Pete had left us about a month or so ago and we did find a replacement and we're looking forward to her starting next week. And still working on the budget. Happy Valentine's Day.
Excellent, so before we move away, uh, we need to come up when we're doing the marijuana ordinance, we need to set a time for that workshop. And we still haven't heard anything from Jenny on the five hundred square.
I sent that out to you, you didn't get it?
I, uh, I'm, okay.
Nice, I, I.
No, you.
Well, maybe I, maybe I didn't, let me check, I, 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 I got it back.
Okay.
I got that, if I didn't, I apologize, I thought I sent it out, if I didn't, I will send it off tomorrow.
All good, I just, uh, before we go, before we get to.
She didn't get that answer, I got it a couple of weeks ago, I bought it, I apologize, I thought I sent it out, I I could have sworn I put it in, in.
I'll go.
And pass it on to you guys.
Long as we have it for the workshop, that's all I care about, Tim.
So should he get that answer?
Awesome.
I will.
Do we have a date for that workshop?
Yeah.
That's what I think we need to figure out.
You're gone. You're gone the last week of February, right?
Yeah, but you don't even.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, we don't need you, so we can fit it, we're not doing budget, maybe we could fit it in there if everybody had time.
Yeah, March, March second, oh, yeah, March, Wednesday, the first or, or the second or the?
I would be very I, the, the second would be good for me. Thursday, the second, I know that's not a normal day for us, but.
I can make it work.
Thank you.
The following weekend, not available.
I'll just, I'll just have Jenny do that.
Yeah, that's it, let's just say for Thursday, the second, we can knock that out.
Thursday, the second, six-thirty, police station.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good.
Cool, thanks for, um, reminding us of that, John.
No problem.
Uh, okay.
No, I just want to make sure we get that in.
Did you say six-thirty or six?
Six-thirty. All right, move on to counselor comments, Mallory?
Um, only thing I have is I attended with Jessica the department meeting yesterday and I really enjoyed that, I'm glad we're getting more involved. And, yeah, the, the crew was very welcoming and happy to have us there and we were happy to be there.
Great. Uh, John?
Absolutely nothing, kind of, sir.
Um, I don't know if anybody else, um, I actually did read the Main Town and City Magazine provided by the MMA. And interestingly enough, in the back section, um, there was a little blurb about town halls not being able to fill town clerk positions. That it's a, I mean, employment is a nationwide problem right now anyway. And I know we've done it in the past and I know a lot of people shy away from applying because unfortunately sometimes benefits outweigh a pay rate, um, and where it's part-time, there's not a whole lot of have we considered position sharing with other local town halls like we've done with some other? If it comes down to that, maybe.
I don't know, I'll refer to the clerk. Madam clerk?
The problem with position sharing in the clerk's offices, the hours I want them is the same hour as the other clerks want them.
Busy times.
We'll ask them if they'd like to work a Saturday. Tell me he's going, because it won't be.
Um, and then my only other question, and I know, Tim, when we discussed the, the costs of the storm cleanup and I had inquired if the state might pick up some of the tab and you said it's highly unlikely because what did, I know they were doing their evaluation and anything.
It was only, it's localized, there were only four towns. Um, it was just us four towns that had it, nobody else had any storm damage, so it didn't meet the county threshold or one with the which doesn't meet the state threshold, which, well.
I, I just, I didn't know if maybe after they did their evaluation, it was worse than they thought it was and we did actually hit the number.
No, I mean, it, it, you know, in all four communities, like I say, Elliot didn't even have the issue we had, you know, we were just it was just us, Wells, uh, York, Kenny Buck area, and pretty much that was it.
My mom complained about her yard until I sent her a picture of mine. Stop complaining about her yard.
So unfortunately, that's one of the challenges that me and Jen were talking about today is trying to find the budget costs, clean up after the storm, because we're going to have to do that ourselves, that's going to impact this current budget.
It is one thing with winter cleanup, you do have a little bit of wiggle room and we can run over. The only thing we can run over on legally is the winter cleanup.
I'll nickel back when Melissa's gone, so I don't get yelled at. I know, I forgot something.
All right, go ahead, Doc.
Do you know when the ice rink is going to be put up?
Next winter.
Because I got it, I got an inquiry and there might be listening, I got an inquiry as to why the ice rink isn't up and I answered it, but I, I have to ask.
It has to be below freezing for more than three or four nights in a row, so the, the ice can freeze in its totality like a block of like an ice cube. So that people won't damage the liner, because the liner costs us eighteen hundred dollars.
Just this year.
So in order to not do that, it can't be that it, you know, it's, it's cold at night, but it's warm in the daytime. And so until it's, we get a, you know, week of eighteen degree weather, probably not going to happen and probably like Jen said, the best answer is probably next year.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the answer and we'll pass it along. Thank you, Jen. Jess?
All right, um, I attended the town and district meeting on Wednesday, February eighth, and, um, the interesting thing out of that, in addition to kind of getting a heads up on their budget was that they are, um, helping to facilitate, um, like a job fair for students, so the adult ed is going to Kittery and kind of talking to people about municipal positions, so that's some great outreach to folks who are up and coming. Um, I sat in on the department meetings yesterday with Mallory, again, just kind of reiterating her comments about it. The takeaways from there, one was like the budget, like do not exceed your budgets like state, so they're facilitating really good work for the public because we're keeping in line with what we need to do. The other thing out of there is that, and the public might not be aware of, but there's a really great HR function within the town administration and I feel like the employees are very, um, engaged with their positions. You look at the safety committee and the things that weren't there a year ago, having, um, job reviews and job description reviews and those types of things, as well as facilitating some professional development with management training, that's all being put out of their office when there's so many other things on their plate, but they're taking care of their employees and I feel as though it's very important for the folks who are tuning in to understand that there's like some really good people doing really good work for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess, thank you. Um. I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I, yep.
Yes.
I am. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
I'm here, you'll be saying those about.
Okay.
Is Brooklyn far away?
I think on those, that's fine.
Do you?
The fitter street one and drumming. I don't have that one. Okay, I just don't have who the second one was.
They shouldn't pick that up. But starting new.
Really wish we had. Yes.
It's, uh.
You may go up and walk around with them.
And I see with my own eyes. Yeah, I had a talk with my wife and she.
Number one, he's planning on being there.